All right, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Keep in mind that our speakers will have about, we'll try to keep it about five minutes and then responses for about five minutes. So, we're gonna start out with dealing with the minutes from, approval of the minutes from July 16th. I'd like to go ahead and look through them for a second. So at this point, I'd like to entertain the idea of a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All shaking. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we're getting to the approval of claims that were tabled for June 7th through July 11th, and approval of claims for July 12th through August 7th, point by four. Do we have any more discussion on that? All right, do we wanna start out with the approval of claims that were tabled for June 7th and July 11th through July 11th? Anybody?
Well, I'm still gonna decline them.
That's fine.
I'm gonna approve with the exception of what we tabled.
We can approve with the exception of what's tabled. Can we do that?
Okay.
And we'll talk about that later. Okay, approval of claims for July 12th through August 7th, do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Do I got a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second, besides the two that were, they're fixed.
They're fixed. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we have, I don't think RQAW is here.
No, she's not. I put a mess on her table before she left, or before.
And that leaves, that takes us to Jerry Downaway.
What I'd like to bring to the word was the fact I'm under the impression there's no building inspector for the town of Milton, and doing a little bit more research and understanding of what that position is, I'd like to offer up either a contract position of myself, or a hired position, either one, if you decide to add that position in for the town of Milton. My background in construction, I'm a journeyman electrician. I've got 15 years of engineering experience, both mechanical and electrical.
Can he go to the right of May that chair?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think very.
Yeah, and then, and yeah, I'd be willing to do it either way. We'll work out the details later, but if you decide to go that route, so I don't like to count each one.
We do.
For sure. And I'd already met with Steve Sora over at Wayne County to discuss what the requirements were and understand it was more of a background and experience.
You have a coaching book.
What's that?
You have a coaching book.
How do you get one? Yeah, that's easy enough.
Now, there's some other resume I have that I'll read.
Okay, yeah, fine, I will get one together and read it.
I'm not sure, don't we have to advertise that before we hire somebody about today, you know?
Yes, I, I don't know.
I think we do.
Well, I'll get the resume together, you guys can figure out the logistics of.
Should I run an advertisement for a building commissioner?
If we're not hiring, my adult can advertise.
And we should interview?
Yes.
What do you think?
Well, how much construction do we have going on?
None, but if the building commissioner wants to call, Wayne County wants to call over here, we're not even in compliance, because we don't have one.
Most of them only get paid a very good amount.
They only get paid a thirty.
Right, I'm doing reflections, so I miss my life.
And I know in our ordinance, there is a price of what, already, of how much the homeowner would pay for that.
Tip was like fifty dollars, reached visit, spending what they were expecting. More than thirty-five to fifty dollars.
Yeah, usually, probably, I'll go and check on tomorrow's call.
Because ninety percent of the stuff that gets inspected are fences. I mean, we only have one new house. Are you, if they accept you, are you able to inspect your own building?
There's no criteria to be a building inspector, as far as direct criteria. So I don't know how they could, as long as it was within compliance of the code, I don't see how it could be a controversy.
There's not a state license?
No.
No.
Or a certificate.
No, I like it. Not gonna elector, elector ain't gotta be a license, not, no. No, if they give them back elector, don't fund you, too.
Lending funds, yes.
Elector, you know.
Licker's on City of Richmond.
That's what they show the license.
Yeah, if you don't have a licker license anywhere to say that you're anybody, City of Richmond, City of Newcastle may give you another one, City of Chicago.
It's just a permit, it's a.
It's just a permit. Yeah, and you can go get that, you don't even have to have your state license for that.
Right.
Yeah, I'll work them both online, I know how they are.
Henry, how these works?
Yeah. Or. So we have to vote on whether to post it, or.
How long do you want it to run?
How long it runs, hard, come back maybe.
Yeah, about four.
Her body green, but that'll make.
You guys are doing it on for about four weeks, posting for the position.
Yeah. I mean, it's just gonna cost you putting paper down.
Maybe we'll have to buy somebody, give them a look at them.
The fee that we have in our ordinance is a single inspection, which requires four on a one or two family dwelling is fifteen dollars per inspection.
And that was written in what year?
Yeah.
Eighty-eight, twenty-one?
We can mend that.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
Yeah. Cost of living went up sixty-something percent since eighty-eight.
Okay, so we'll, we agree that we're gonna just go ahead and post it for that, and then start doing interviews on that.
Okay. So Phil, we didn't approve the last bills, did we?
Yeah, except, we approved the bills except for the two vicentinian.
Oh, oh, I didn't think we were doing both of them together.
No, we approved.
No, it's separate.
We've got, we've held it.
And one, June is tabled, and then July got passed.
But all the other bills, we, we're gonna do.
Okay, so I didn't know, I thought we were gonna do.
We were doing it separate.
This is July, this one, you did not sign. Right, so I thought we were just doing.
But we are.
She needs that one, July is past the table, June. This is the one we just did.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is the one we just, this is the whole one.
Yeah. Okay, Tom, you got the floor.
Police report for this month, very, very busy month for ordinance violations and warnings. We did, as you know, our process is sort of dynamical, as we go a bit, and one of the things that we also have, our finding is that we're having some difficulty on getting paid for the fines that are written. As such, we've been in touch with town council, Joe Lips, who has agreed to take those files from us and litigate them. So that's, it's unfortunate, but it's also a good thing, because now we're sort of having to close to the, to the circle that was open previously.
We should have gone through Hagerstown Court.
We can't do that, unfortunately. That was our understanding initially, but the way it's gonna happen now is they'll go through small claims court, is how Mr. Lips will litigate them. And then it will also, at that point, include court costs and his costs. So, just, instead of just suing for the price of, or for the fine itself, he'll include litigation costs and associated fees, filing fees, and things like that. So it, up until just today, I think we had about, just under four thousand dollars worth of outstanding fees for ordinance violations alone. So that, it's significant, you know?
What court is that, what court does that go into then?
Small claims.
So then our tickets still go to Hagerstown?
Correct.
That's why we had to come up with the ordinance bureau, because Hagerstown didn't wanna do it.
Great, so that's, yeah.
And to collect the money, we have to take it to the court.
So, busy, busy month, I think you all have already seen the report, lots of activity there, internal patrol and, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, but I don't need much more of your time, so. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me. I did, I think you all have seen, we do have, we're hoping to schedule a fundraiser and put together what's gonna be, and I apologize, I don't have flyers for those of you in the audience, but it's very much in preliminary stages, but I'm sure the town council doesn't mind sharing, in fact, you all don't mind if somebody can have one on the ass of ground, so they can have a look at it. So the plan is October the 26th to do a popo versus hose draggers, or police versus fire department chili cook-off. And it's a Western Wayne County event, is what we're doing. We're trying to basically do some things that not only are gonna be a fundraiser for the police department, but that will also improve camaraderie between the departments, because, you know, we do work together a lot, and so anything we do in that vein, obviously, will be very, very advantageous, I think. So we've got, we've got a plan, we also have some lessons learned from prior events, and we've already got, you know, some potential advertising lined up. Our plan will be to advertise on Kix 96 the week prior to leading up to the event. We already have entertainment scheduled, and it's a well-known entertainer who's agreed to hold a spot until we get the final go-ahead from you all. So, off camera, I'll be happy to share that, that with you as well. And we've got just about everything put together, to the point where we felt like it's gonna be a good event. We're gonna do a gun raffle, we've got someone who's already agreed to provide a gun at cost, at dealer cost. We're gonna do a fifty-fifty, and we're gonna do a cornhole tournament, and it's gonna be a family affair. We'll put the police cars out, we'll put the fire trucks out, and we're open to ideas about some other things. I don't wanna muddy the water too much, because I think we already have a lot of great things going on, but we want it to be a fall festival-type atmosphere as well. So, tentatively, we have scheduled, I think, three to six, maybe? Yeah, looks like that's right. And there'll be prizes, we'll do, we'll get sponsors for all the prizes. There'd be a prize for hot and mild chili, both police and fire, and then a grand prize for both hot and mild, which would be a different price point. Again, we'll, we'll solicit sponsors for all of those endeavors. Any questions I can answer for you about?
Keep in mind, I know how to cook.
Well, bring it.
It's brought.
So, I submit that for your approval, and if you all give us the go-ahead, we'll put the final touches on the plans, and again, I do solicit any of your feedback, because here this, I am certainly no party planner. So it's something where, you know, it takes a village, so I would encourage an input for us. But I think it's a neat concept, I think it's a neat event, and I think we can do it and bring some, not only bring some revenues in, but do, create a good, a great community event, too. So we're really excited about the prospects, so that's all I have today.
All right, thank you. And now Bruce, time for you.
We had the water tower inspected by complete restoration. They found a few discrepancies. A couple, I didn't think was that big of a deal, they listed them in red. The foundation has to have like a six-inch exposure, which the erosion has moved, it's all down, I can see why we can't pull that back a little bit. But the, the bolts at the bottom, there's supposed to be a lock washer on, or there's supposed to be, the thread's supposed to be peeled to prevent them from loosening, which they're not loosening, but there needs to be a lock washer on, according to OSHA. And then there's a, I guess there's not a lightning, it's not electrically grounded for lightning protection, and that's a no-no. There's, there's silk on the outside of the tower that needs to be, with the risers, the drainage valve. They saw, it's a drain valve, performs two functions, allows tanks to drain, and is used to, as a blowout to remove the silk scale from the lower portion of the tank. That wasn't even an issue, sorry. The steel riser main hole, there was something to do with that, above the base of the riser, the main hole, shall be not less than twelve inches, eighteen inches by eighteen inches in size. So the opening, according to this company, it's not large enough for, to get someone out if they are in it. What's that, I should be in anyway. The ladder, there's not, the ladder that's not got anti-skid runs. And this, fixed ladders more than twenty feet high shall be provided with a cage well or ladder for safety purposes. The windy trods and risers, they need to be adjusted. Those big, those big, look like big giant, thread all going to heat site, they're, I guess they're supposed to be adjusted from time to time. I think, when did we have that done before? Six years ago, seven years ago?
Probably, maybe eight, nine years ago.
Yeah, it's supposed to be done every five years. There's a handrail that needs some attention at the top, which I would have no way of knowing that, because I'm not ever gonna be on the top of that thing. There's a screen at the bottom, an overflow screen, it's, it appears to be clogged, I mean, and it needs to be replaced. But just some general maintenance. But it was put in, what, eight-four, eight-five? But it's just time for it to be done again. There's some paint chipping, which the, the main thing was the ladders. There's a ladder that's going down in the interior that's starting to deteriorate. But they sent one of those water, or units down in. Really, that's all, I mean, that's all that I had to say as far as, I just don't know what we wanna do about it. If we wanna continue with this company or look at another one. I, I know the one that we had done before, they took forever, and I think they were out of Colorado.
I never had a second opinion, anyway.
Yeah. The one out of Colorado, I liked, and never got them to put it back together, and then when we did put it back together, that opening, Mike and I had to dig out five-gallon buckets full of sandblasts sand at the bottom.
I remember that.
We found a toboggan, a pair of gloves, and.
Somebody got undressed all over there. Somebody got undressed all over.
Yes, I mean, we super chlorinated it, although still, you don't want that at the bottom of your tank.
No.
Way down the bottom.
I'd give a second opinion, though.
Any second opinions about the second opinion?
No. Third time's the charm.
Okay.
I mean, more than where it really can get, yeah. Because I think the last time they painted the inside of the.
They coated it.
Coated the inside.
Did they, did they ever paint the outside the last time, or did it just?
Not last time.
No.
Time before.
It doesn't look that bad, it looks like it just needed to be pressure washed along the sides. There was a couple of spots that had a little bit of rust, but.
It probably ain't been painted in twelve years.
Really?
Eleven, twelve, now.
Back in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, or fourteen?
Oh my.
I think is when they painted the exterior, because it was rusty.
It's bad.
Yeah. Then the interior was done sometime after that.
All right, what did you, what were you gonna tell us about the McAllister service contract?
Oh, I, I didn't know we were even gonna talk about that, so you guys looked it over, I just got this, I just got this to them.
We can look it over and then discuss it.
Yeah, it's a service contract for the generators. I've never heard the one kick on, ever.
Either one working?
I've never heard it kick on, the one out at the, the water, or the lift station on Mill Street. The one up on one, I used to be able to get to come on, but it would run, do a cycle, and then just shut off, so.
It doesn't even come on now, the.
No.
So we need some service.
Oh, and, Tom, we need some service, okay.
When was the last, do you know when the last time they were serviced? So not while you've been here, in Sheenburg?
Generators, and then generators for a long time, and others have.
But what I understand, the reason why the service contract was such a big deal is because it was paid, but then the McAllister would go ahead and send an invoice showing, for your records, what was paid, well, they were paying it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know, the confusion just made it not so good.
Made it, made it much better, yeah.
So I don't know if we got a big check at the end, or it finally caught up with itself, but.
I don't know.
It went somewhere.
Yeah.
So this is the total over a three-year time period?
Yeah, and I think you could do it in a year, two years, a few years.
So you mean four?
Year four and five.
Does this start at six months?
Yeah.
Year four and five are free.
Oh, okay. Have you read it, or did I have, like, really, I looked at it for a while?
It says, one, two, and three different prices for each one, and then seven is four and five.
Okay.
If you look down at the bottom, it says grand totals, town of Milton, one through five.
Where's it say that?
It says zero dollars for four and zero dollars for five.
Yeah.
Up there at the top, it says contract terms, thirty-six months.
So then we need to make sure that's what the term is.
So maybe he didn't give us a.
Five-year.
Four and a five-year price, is to thirty.
Can you call him tomorrow?
Yeah, so it said, cause it just says twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. In the, in the.
No, I see that.
And it just says years one, years two, years three.
We need something, if that generator ain't working up there, we can get a fix.
Right. I didn't know if it would be cheaper just to have them come down and fix it.
I ain't cheating on you about it.
When was the last time batteries were confirmed? Cause that, the big one, if you didn't know what you was doing, you'd start it up and you turn it off real quick. It's supposed to let it run through the cycle. And I have some people starting them, and then they go and turn it off, and it's supposed to run through the good cycle to check everything, self-check everything, and they would turn it off early.
The only one, who for sure that runs is the one at the water plant, and a high-period run every Monday. It comes on and runs about fifteen minutes, and stays on, then cycles down.
Are they, are they supposed to do the same thing?
They're supposed, that one at the, the lift station on Mill Street is supposed to kick on every week, or however they have it set to test it off, and then go through its cooldown cycle and shut off, but I've never heard that one run. I've never been able to start that one either. I've been able to start the one up on one.
Is that the point, you said you couldn't pour or push to start or pour, right?
No, you can't, you can't either one of those, those are just big manual, big manual units.
All right, and Scott is gonna discuss the fire department updates and the approval for a new desktop computer. Scott?
I guess. It's, I mean, they didn't say anything to me about, talk about, I'm just gonna say, we had a good spaghetti dinner, tart out, and we're gonna have another one. I like to think everybody showed up for that, but we do need a, I guess we do need a new laptop. So that's out of my department, what comes into computers.
So will they submit us, like, a price list, or?
So a laptop or a desktop?
Whatever the ones they want.
This is what Richie gave to me.
Says desktop.
Yeah, he didn't want a laptop, because he was bravely walked out the building?
Actually, yeah.
I guess they're still waiting on a couple of estimates for our new tarp.
Waiting on what?
New tarp, estimates for a new tarp, something that we have to have.
Did you get one ordered?
We're waiting on estimates for it.
Yeah.
Waiting on estimates for it.
All right, then we'll move on, Amy, gonna talk about the citizen request forms for the quotes for the bridge sign erection. We're gonna, we wanna put the old bridge sign back up again. And the quote we got is ridiculously high, and we were looking at pictures, and the pictures, when it was over there at the library, it was just on two four-by-fours buried in the ground and mounted on, and that, to me, that would be my idea, that would be fine to remount the same way. I can't see, this guy wants three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to build a little stone encasing for it, and myself, I can't see spending that kind of money for, something like that. Four-by-fours or six-by-sixes, put some concrete in the ground and just mount the sign.
Should we have the same glass, we repaint it first?
That probably would be a bad idea.
Get it powder coated?
Yeah.
Powder coated, yeah.
Yeah. But I, I think we were planning to put it here in front of this building, weren't we?
Yeah.
I think it should be over at the school.
Yeah, I think it would look good over at the school, but...
There's more room for it now that they've, when they've, um, aligned this where it was gonna go is right where, uh, whose car that is out there? In the corner, that's right where it would go.
Where does he want to put it?
Right in the corner.
Right up there.
I think it should, my, my personal opinion, it should go on this end of the school, front, front school lot. Because we have the, uh, canal sign at the other end.
Oh, yeah. That wouldn't be real visible there either, right there.
That would just zoom in right there.
Yeah, that'd be more visible over there. Yeah. On the other end of the canal sign. So I guess we all agree we'll just scrap that idea.
Yeah.
That's just way too expensive.
I suggested it go, suggested that it go on like a six-by-six instead of a four-by-four because the four-by-fours over there and the picture that I found, it just scared me because that's a heavy, heavy sign.
Yeah, I agree.
Could we talk, uh, we could incorporate that sign into the park?
Yeah, he's been doing pretty good with...
Incorporating things?
Incorporating things. Okay, so what kind of reports do we have from council? Are you done?
Um, just so everybody knows, the, we have a citizen or, uh, guest request to approach for the Milton council meetings. We've had them for a long time. They were here when I got here. I just updated them. I've added now a date to have it turned back in. The good thing about these is it lets me know, to let the council know that we need to have either the lawyer, Tom, Bruce, whoever, extra people to be here. Uh, we had a lady come in with her, uh, some complaints on some vegetation, and I took care of it right in front of her. I went right over to my computer. She wrote everything out on the complaint form. I went right over to my computer, emailed it. Tommy took care of it the very next day. So it cuts off all the commotion that this town council has been used to for years. If I can fix it in that window, I would much rather do that and let you know that I had a request. I took care of it. And it just makes it easier than having all the arguing and yelling in here.
Or trivial things.
Yeah. And if I can't answer it, then I will absolutely bring it to council.
Do you actually feel a volume left every part of the meeting then, what you done or...
Yeah, I can operate it and show you exactly who it was and what I did, because I even attached the email of where I sent it to Tom and what it was.
I think it is.
And if it's something where we would have to spend, you know, a bunch of money, then we'll vote on it on yeah, council.
And these are gonna be turned, these need to be turned in the Thurs, by Thursday, the first Thursday of every month. That way I can get them to them at our Thursday meeting, our workshop meeting, so they, they have time to look over what the citizen concern is, to, uh, tell me what I need to do, if I need to get, um, Joe here or whatever. It's just gonna work out a little bit smoother because it's been kind of chaotic the last few years.
Yeah, when you open it up, when you open up the floor, sometimes it's a stick of dynamite and we don't really need that at a meeting. All right, we're going to go on?
Yeah.
All right, uh, we had a park board meeting on July twenty-ninth at ten AM, and I felt like it was a pretty productive meeting. And we have some pictures of some of the things that are gonna be happening and we're pretty excited about.
We've already purchased those.
The buildings have been purchased and they're, they're putting them together as we speak.
Awesome.
Yep. And as you, as we saw, yeah, some have seen, they're starting to put the parking lots in. Uh, Teddy and Bruce today, uh, weren't you guys digging up?
That shut-off valve that's been ran into.
For the water hookups.
Yeah, we need to talk with Whitney. Third guy's ran into.
And Bennett, we gotta talk to them for the repair of it. On canal, perch and...
Cherry.
Oh, Cherry.
Back to them back. It was the red thing sticking out around that eagle.
Up there's part of the old school.
Yeah, and it had a shut-off on top of it.
The bricks, what did you tell me, Dwight, about the bricks?
Right now, they're all out of bricks, probably maybe mid-October before they can get the bricks that would kind of match while we're already...
That's for the four corners. We want them to match the archway, and so to get those matching bricks, we're gonna have to wait a little bit.
So will the things for the park, like things that need approved, do they come to the park board to get approved? Or will they come here to get approved?
They go to Philip. Then he cut, Randy had, came here and said Randy, you need to go to Philip. Philip approved that, that those be ordered.
The funds are really in a separate fund. They're not controlled, they're not really controlled by the town. They're controlled by the park board.
But I put it on, uh, the billing so that you would see it, that this much money has went out of the park fund. And then I just transfer that money over.
And we are more than...
Because it doesn't have the checking at all.
We're more than fortunate to have Pow Paving help us with this, and they're kicking in a lot of money.
Everything that they're doing right now, they haven't asked for anything.
Randy's even got, uh, antique iron benches that he bid on, on the internet to, and they're just beautiful.
And drove to Indianapolis and...
We've got like, what, six or eight of those?
Eight, I think. I think he said eight.
They're cast iron. They're invincible. Kids won't tear them up.
Neither will the adults. That's where I was going.
No, they won't. They got a pretty good security system, one on each corner.
We're still unsettled on, uh, uh, plans for a fountain in the center, which we, we do want a fountain in the center, but it's gotta be a low maintenance and not a great big thing that kids are gonna climb in and, and we're gonna have to drain in the winter and do all kinds of things like that. So we're still, we're still on the planning.
It's either gonna be a fountain or, uh, flags with the lights in the ground that light up the flag.
And then the playground equipment for the kid, well, we're still working on grants for the basketball goals and things like that. We're putting in a new basketball court, court and a new pickleball court. But we, you know, we need donations and grants for some of that.
The nets and the basket, yeah, the goals, and there's a whole list of things that they gave to me. And I've sent those off to Bethfield at the EDC, so we'll just wait and see.
So you're not reusing any of the existing?
We're trying not to.
We don't, yeah, we want them to be... We want the sharpshooters and those on Milton. So that's pretty much up to date on the park. I'm optimistic about it.
I'm excited.
We got this huge, like, they're gonna point straight to the north.
And I think we decided to put the flag pole over there too.
I could have another tree out there.
A flag pole? A flag pole?
A flag pole.
I hope so. We need to figure out how to get a flag pole at the city building. Whether it's attached to the building or something, I don't know. People drive by here and don't even know one's here.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, I guess we need to announce that we need to have an executive meeting. I know everybody's needing that, but we need to have an executive meeting about this other thing we tabled.
Claims?
The claims that we tabled.
When do you want to have it? But we can't vote off. You have an executive meeting. Or you can't vote. It can be a discussion and then you vote on it the next month. So you guys just pick a day.
You have an executive meeting and then a regular meeting afterward.
So if we just schedule an executive meeting before, right before the next
Right.
business meeting? If that goes along with the...
Makes sense.
Like the workshop again?
Like a workshop?
That's probably what it would be.
Before the workshop or...
We could probably do it after workshop. That would be better for everybody.
That might be what you guys wanna do.
Yeah, let's just do it at the workshop.
But if you do it at the workshop, is the public gonna be available to attend?
Yeah, why not?
Workshops are open.
Yeah, but you just said executive meeting, because they're not. I mean, for the yelling, it's...
What are you guys on, Mark?
The group. They don't seem to know that.
Somebody yelling, I'm going home.
So the next, next month's board meeting is the tenth, and the workshop is the fifth. So we can either have it, um, the fifth before the workshop, that way you guys could discuss it, or the tenth for the board meeting.
Tough to tell, everybody. I don't care. I split across the street.
We're in the backyard.
I don't know, I'm straight. I don't care either.
Before the workshop.
And for the, before the workshop, are you able to be here? What, how long do you think it's gonna take?
It'd take long. Thirty minutes?
Yeah.
So can you use your half-hour thirty?
Oh, yes. She gonna get off till five, doesn't she?
Right.
You get off at five?
I'm here at five.
Five minutes? All right, five thirty.
You could hold it at six for the, and then do the workshop after six.
No, I don't wanna be here all night.
But you like it here.
I like it here. This is an executive meeting to discuss the June
So when they start doing the sidewalks, why can't we just have a slab poured out here? With studs, they're gonna put a flag pole there.
I, I don't care where it goes.
Where are you gonna put the monument before?
Like, I don't care where it goes.
Yeah, but I don't think they'll be able to use, like, do that because it's for grants, so they might not be able to just pour a slab.
No, yeah, I know. I mean, but during that same timeframe, I don't mean, yeah, I know what you mean.
Or you guys pour one like you did down at the...
Well, we could, we got access to a small cemetery mixture now.
And then all I have to do is order the pole and two flags. Well, I have one flag.
How many of you on, uh?
I'll just take the one out of your yard.
You don't want that in the tree.
I'd like to have one with the light on the top, a solar.
Yeah.
That way we don't have to have a casting line.
Where you can, it's not very...
And telescoping.
It's not liar.
Sure people.
Randy was proposing putting flagos on both sides of the, uh, monument.
Was good. Signaller's on down there.
You have a light there, or maybe, you know, Burke and flag and then state flag. That way, that would show that monument up too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm game with the flags.
Try to get a light back.
Because I'm proud to be an American.
He took down. I mean, that was his, his thought.
So can I have your permission to order a flag pole and, and American flag? I already have a state flag. I guess this depends on like the size and whether it is, and I'm just gonna get, I'm gonna get a telescoping. How tall should it be?
Right here?
Yeah.
I don't like the one that's over here. It's...
It's gonna like, try to just regular round pole or...
Telescopic pole.
You see them like twenty-five feet?
People drive right by here and have no idea that what we're, what this is.
Yeah, that one'd be too tall with the traffic lights there. I, I had thought about one like that one. Because that's kind of like the same one you guys got for the cemetery up there.
Where you gonna put it at?
Right out here in the peak.
Right, then I could put it right here. It'll stop people from driving right up on it.
We can cord drill a whole, a circle pole.
That would be a good idea.
Put a concrete barrier around it.
I could put it right here.
That's where I would put it. You could cord drill a sidewalk and put it out there.
Right in the hole.
Well, you remember Cedric talked about he could come and saw cut that, uh,
Yeah, and try and pull it in.
So if you put one out here with the state, like, since the, it's by the lights?
Yeah, I don't know.
You wouldn't, I'd say, uh, you wouldn't have much of the, the lights and stuff taken away from it. It'd be hidden.
We might be better off just do, like, cord drill the sidewalk.
I think I'd do exactly that. I'd cord drill that wall and just put a pole in there.
If you got a light on it, it also acts as a screw box.
You buy a solar light, put on this, kinda like what y'all mind.
That's why everybody, the road's green, solar.
Yeah, light type, real good.
So how, how tall should it be?
Either that or no, on the tip of the, the piece there, wouldn't start up.
Twenty foot, twenty out there.
Twenty foot?
Yeah.
You think twenty, everybody, twenty foot?
Twenty, I think.
With a, uh, solar light on the top? And a flag bigger than the state flag that, that I have already?
I got, I got, I got five by six on it.
That's too small. My head is five by six state flag, so it has to be bigger than that.
Uh, I think if my head, you want to put it, you want a whole, like, a whole lot of wind on it.
Maybe I have to buy me a light one.
The only thing I have to put on a state flag and American flag.
Can you get a smaller state flag?
I have to get, I, I may can see which is cheaper to get. It's a pretty expensive period. But all I can see, if it'd be cheaper, I still, I don't have an American flag.
I, I got behind her, her mind.
So I could, I mean, if it's cheaper for me to get, I'll have your quotes.
Okay.
For the flag and a, and a pole.
Non-classable pole?
No, I want it to be telescopic and this, but if I have to go out there and half-staff it, and Bruce isn't here.
Why don't you give Anita Dode, she might be like, she has an American flag.
From the late...
Yeah, she got the one from the, for the fire station.
Um, I'll ask her. Is the telescopic one, is it as strong as like if you did the regular pole?
Mine is, because I've been up for almost four years and now it's, even with the wind, I don't take it down.
When you drive a car into it, it's gonna... Drive a car into it and check the impact?
Because you catch a goodbye.
I would much rather have a flag pole than have me in a car. To make it a drag.
I don't think a flag pole's gonna start like a car.
Or if you got more concrete than, I mean, a concrete wall.
I'll ask Anita about the American flag and then I'll, um, I'll get quotes on the next smallest state flag.
Okay.
I'll, I'll look. I may have a pole down there, do it. I'll look.
A new telescoping pole?
Yeah. It's on the box.
Keep some spares around, do you?
Well, if I was your boss, you're gonna put in that ham off, it's right.
Oh.
She doesn't have a light, can you talk about it?
No, I don't have a light yet, probably like that.
Don't. That's somewhere.
Hey, you can get it on, uh, the hamadon. Mine is like forty bucks.
But I'll talk to Anita and then I will get the quotes for the state flag and American flag in case they don't have any like that. And then if you, will you look for the flag?
Yeah, I'll look for it.
And then if he doesn't, if he doesn't have a flag pole, then I'll get quotes.
I'm not sure I knew that, though.
Twenty feet, good enough?
I'm making up right here.
All right. All right then, uh, do I have a motion that we adjourn tonight?
So, so I have a few things to...
Oh, okay.
So it's been, when we were having a couple of our workshops, we talked about the, um, it's for the fire police and, um, the studies, any elements? Like, without coming to council? Making sure those, like, certain items over a certain mountain has to come to council for approval?
Yeah. We need to set in the mound board.
Right. I think for, like, all departments.
Yeah. If there's anything major, they should come to the board, to the board.
Great.
Does that include auto repair?
Depends. On now.
Then it does, it's so they have to bring that before they...
They're gonna be over somebody's money, they should have come to the board.
I just, I'm just asking. What's the limit?
I don't know what the limit is, but...
It's five hundred now, isn't it?
That's what I thought it was.
It's already in place, five hundred.
Five hundred what's in place now, please pardon?
Yeah, five hundred was in place, but I've, I mean, if it's a car repair that's needed, I mean, I don't think Bruce, you've never gotten approval in the past to have a lawnmower fix or something, I don't think, so that would be new, but otherwise, it's already five hundred.
Well, I would say, I bet you may, uh, start to break down emergency equipment, you could, I don't, you could always call the board together or whatever.
So we're just going back to the June's accounts payable, there was a lot of bills on there that never came to council that probably should have.
What, they were over five hundred?
I think.
They were over five hundred though?
Well, I know like this, I mean, like the car repair lot this past month was.
Well, that one.
Um.
Yeah, we've not, we've not brought car repairs previously for, for approval, I don't think Bruce's department has, or my department, or fire department, or anything like that, so that would be new.
I mean, if it's gonna be more than five hundred dollars, I, I think the board should be notified about it, but, uh, if it's emergency equipment, it's gotta be paid. The board just needs to know that.
I usually call somebody and ask them first, they can ask them.
So yeah, there's something that's over five hundred. On this one, on this count, sorry.
Well, you have mechanical, the vehicle, but then again, you also have accessories, wanna separate them? Accessories could be radios or anything else.
I'm thinking of.
Some of the stuff that you're looking at might be, they got for the grant.
It's grants.
If it's radios, that's the correct.
It's all grants, but, so of course that, that money is.
It's already here.
Yeah, that's our money.
No, we never get shuttled up on the grant.
Oh yeah, it's already, already done.
And that's what some of the things showing up on that are from the grant.
But not all though.
No, no.
I mean, it works for, I think it's, so I think, like, I'm not sure what's, what the amount of, but I just think some of it needs to be. But not very much is coming to council for approval, like, before, certain things had to come to council for approval.
Yeah. Well, we got a limit set, well, it has been set, so now, now they've had to come to the council to get approval. Uh, you know, if it has to have an emergency meeting, we just set one up.
So if any of the cars, trucks, breakdown, it has to come to council? If it's an emergency situation, get a hold of council and they'll have an emergency meeting.
You'll hold bill, if he's president, he can. He can have a lot of emergency, he could have that operation authorized to do more than that if it's an emergency. He has that power.
I mean, a flat tire wouldn't pull it out.
No.
But some don't behind change, huh?
You, you, the one time we talked about, used to, the president had, can actually authorize up to five thousand dollars without getting board approval. You know, an emergency situation.
Say that again?
Up to five thousand.
Oop, guess I might catch on some toes when that fire truck got bought.
That's why at least I have one of our trucks.
Anyway. Screaming crying is not, I don't want to hear it.
I mean, in the past, when they got, like, this is when I was with council, but they used to do mileage for, like, the police cars when they got gas and fire trucks did mileage, we owned those vehicles.
I have.
They filled it.
Each time they fill up?
Yep.
Comes in on that wax payment for the fire department and they have a, um, form that they fill out.
Carry a log sheet, right?
They have a log sheet.
Do you log, do you have any miles?
Yep.
And I make sure that the gallons match those logs every month.
I don't wanna carry that either.
Does the fire department, you got change?
They, they sent, they gave me their receipts.
Yeah, they, whoever fills the truck up, puts the mileage and signs the receipt, and they turn it in.
And I check them off on the wax bill every month.
You fill out over here?
No, not yet, we're moving.
Can you truck?
When is, how close are we to the move?
Thursday. Thursday, those will be moved and the fire department and the police department will have, be able to utilize both tanks, they need eighteen cents a gallon, because they're going to the fire station.
And why are they going to the fire station?
Cause the truck won't fit in the other one.
Fire department trucks won't fit down in the alley, there's a pole right in the middle of that, well, I mean, they did an intersection.
They still don't fill up the, I mean, the, their truck, their, one truck that will fit in there, they don't take down there now.
Well, we didn't ever give them a key.
No. Because this discussion was.
Yeah.
They're gonna paint tomorrow, the market where it goes down there and it's gonna be moved and then the benefit of it is wax charges is full mouth, whatever the pay, whatever the gases or fuel at Village Bantry, that's exactly what they charge us. Going through, what is it?
The Lions.
Alliance.
Keystone, whatever.
They save us eighteen cents a gallon both sides, diesel and regular.
Who's supposed to come, you for a key?
No, um, Richie will have it. And that, and that, that log exactly the same way the police and Bruce do, that way I keep, I have a spreadsheet of everything that they've gotten out of that.
And it's all on camera.
Yeah, and everything's on camera. And then the same will be over here, they have a camera on the north side of the building that shows exactly where those tanks are gonna be. See, and it, I would like a fence to go up around it for the sake, cause there are children over there and it's close to that part with the flagpole sign on it.
But what?
Flagpole sign on it.
Build fence on that.
But if it has a fence, we wouldn't be able to see it.
Build a fence.
Yeah, but we have to build the fence.
Well, the fence, you'll still be able to go home with the tanks.
Not if you put a privacy fence up around it.
Scott, didn't you have the truck, you had a steel leak in mine too?
Yeah.
Yeah. You got anything about it or? How many guys are gonna fix it? We gotta take that truck out of service, cause we can't take the engine two out of service until we get a tarp for engine four. We don't wanna take a chance on losing another hose on there.
Is there a tarp on two?
Yeah, but it won't fit on four. Where are you gonna try and get tarp? Dustin, check the cup.
We're just gonna see what the bids are, guys, we're gonna open that envelope just to see if anybody's doing decent on, cause it's gonna have to come off of the playground, so.
Well, we can't keep a bid that was in the paper for a certain period of time and not open.
The bid.
And not open a bid.
We've actually had a few, few people ask about the truck, since they got moved up here now.
I saw, I've seen twice now, I've seen people looking at it.
Yeah, the owner of Robinson's, boy water camp ground in Conjo, when I was a camper there last weekend, he asked me about it. I said, truck is good shape, it's just tank is shot, can't be replaced, can't be fixed, it's wet, but everything on the truck is in good shape. So he's kinda lit up a little bit.
And he never, never found those lights?
Dead and I took the shed apart and we didn't find them. So we don't know what happened to them then. I know where the siren is, I got the siren for it, and whoever gets the truck will get the siren.
Okay, Junior, do the drum roll.
Fifteen hundred and five. So that's even below the, my minimum was that they were asking.
That's why I've been, uh, booting Hank off for it, for it. Out there is twenty-five hundred for it.
Looks like it's still for sale.
The problem is, is it's got a pack of motor, nobody wants it.
Whoa, that's right there. Whoa, that's right there.
Hundred forty-five, I'm right now.
Refused?
Probably two, twenty-two, three thousand dollars probably.
Refused?
Yeah, that's. That's all root and anger given for the scrap negative.
I'm gonna be fit in a minute, so that'll.
How many miles on it? Fifty-seven thousand.
One hundred?
Miles.
And all hundred miles, you know?
Yeah, two to four miles.
His one's driving. Eleven Amish, I would, for the motor, they never come in.
Amish come drive.
I don't have a part of you either, do I?
Soup up his butt.
What would the motor itself be worth?
It's not, that's not a sought after motor.
Good, good, when I was, I remember when I was filming. But fifteen, that's, that's, I, I, I. That's just a place to front tires. I, I'd draw a boot, Hank, Hank, I think he would, but I'm moving.
Calling it out.
No, I shouldn't have him deal with it.
Is the, is my, pardon, the, um, junkyard, is it one of the violators that hasn't been paid, that hasn't paid?
Nope. It's paid today.
Somebody paid five hundred dollars.
Yeah. One has been paid and the rest we're seeking, um, Joe to help us with.
Yeah, there's just one so far that actually paid today is the first one.
And then what happens since the violation's still not been, but the, see, since the violation hasn't been, been, completed? I mean, like.
Was the next step after that?
Yeah.
He's turned, he's turned about two hundred into small claims.
Yeah. It, um, I know what she's asking, she's asking if he doesn't, if he doesn't go down there and get compliant, does it start over or does it just add to the next one?
Yeah, adds to the next one.
There you go.
And all the people with animals, they haven't complied?
No. And now we have a rooster in town.
Cause the rooster's learning to crow next door to me. He practiced all over and checking.
That's not the only.
I said, I wonder if drunk.
Oh yeah.
He wasn't doing too well.
About four thirty every morning.
That's not the only one.
No, it's not.
Cause I hear it's not coming from that direction.
I know that we have, we do have two, not the animals.
But I think close to you are, I think you can, if you have cemetery road, then they are allowed to consider the cattle. I think, if that's what they're coming from, cause I'm pretty sure that, that Barlet's have, or was that her name?
Yeah.
And all we can do is give them the ticket and then.
Have we been, I at least have been, send, just from residents kind of telling me, or you guys tell me, or somebody tells, at least five ordinance, I have, not every other day, it's on ish, every other day, do it every week.
But is there at some point that those animals can just be removed because they haven't complied?
No. Why it just keeps growing? Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's not an end, to answer your question, there, there's, as of right now, there is not, there, there's not an end as far as our ordinances are concerned. I think that, that's sort of a top priority for council, if I'm not mistaken, I don't wanna speak on your behalf, but I think one of you all's jobs right now is to be looking at the ordinances for, um, for updating them, if I'm not mistaken, um, and that's a good scenario, one of the things we need to take a look at, there's, I mean, we could go on and on talking about the things that we need to look at in terms of ordinances, cause it has been a while since they were written, so certainly, I would say, I wish I had a better answer for you, but no, the, the ordinance doesn't allow for, uh, I think the only exception to that potentially is, um, in terms of dogs, uh, and I'm, I'm aware of, of an issue, you can take an animal.
Right now, Animal Alliance has tripled their prices for strays, because I was having strays fade neutered and now my vet's cheaper than Animal Alliance.
And they're turning animals away.
They're turning animals away.
Yeah, they're turning, because they just, they don't have room for them right now, it's a real issue, so. It's a good point though, something we need to take a look at for sure.
So if you take, when we take these violate, violations to small claims and still don't get paid, is there a way to put a lien on their property?
And they garnish their wages.
Well, I don't know if I can put a lien on for, um, an ordinance violation. I don't, I don't know, I can take them, I can turn them over to small claims, because they're just gonna sit there.
They can garnish their wages though.
Small claims.
Small claims.
Yeah, so Joe can do the.
So the, what you're talking about here, the, the big delineation is these are civil issues, uh, so it has to be handled through the civil court, they're not criminal in nature, um, so it's treated like any other collections activity. So there's a process that has to go through and that process would entail the beginning of litigation, if it's non-collected debt, then, as the litigation moves, then there are steps that, yes, eventually can end in an execution where, you know, someone, someone could actually have money taken from their accounts to pay that, that's something that, that I'm not qualified to speak about that process, and is a better question for Joe, um, Towns attorney. But yes, there is a process and once Joe gets his hands on them, which he now has, that process will begin, and, and again, this is something we're learning as we go, we're, because I don't know that there's ever been a time when ordinances have been addressed and enforced to the level that they are now. So we're, you know, just trying to kind of figure things out as we go.
And it snowballs as it goes along, because you get to pay the court costs and all that.
But what, so, my thing is, so we pay to go to small claims, like we pay Joe to file the claims, to go to small claims. I mean, they still can garnish wages, but, and until they garnish wages, it can sit there because they can't pay it, and it'll just be like a.
So do you wanna be to ask Joe if, if we don't see an amount of money in a certain period of time, if we can garnish their wages?
I guess it depends on.
Small claims.
Small claims can do that, they'll do it, you know, total.
But they won't take forever, they'll, they get pretty quick on that, because I've known people that I've worked with, that Sears and places like that have come in and started taking out of their paychecks from small claims. I mean, it might take a while, but eventually, even if they're working at the mini mark, they can take out their wages. And they can also take their federal tax returns.
And then Joe won't be paid before, probably, like, we'll have to pay Joe.
Joe's included in the fee, so when, when the ordinance goes over, it will also, he, he will, he will also.
Attorney fees and.
Attorneys fees, filing fees, everything.
But he's gonna want his money before that's probably settled, if he, if it never gets settled.
Yeah, about to build. I'm sure he's gonna build, yeah, he's gonna build first time, just like he always has when he's issues, the difference with here is that he's gonna attempt to recoup them through the legal process.
That's all we can do. We can't go down and down on it, yes.
No, I go. And in that part of the process, listen, uh, I know you're asking a lot of questions about it and that's out of my lane, so I don't wanna speak out of my lane, but know this, that's a well-established process. It's not, that's, that's been a process, it's been in place, that litigation process for unpaid debts, so it, it will, like, I, I, like you said, Phil, I think that piece of it will probably click along very, very rapidly, as rapidly as you're gonna get in a situation where you're involved in the court system, but, but certainly, I think, yeah, it works and I think, uh, in fact, I know when I talked to Joe last night, I think about it, he was very encouraged, he said, oh, we'll, we'll have, we'll have some good successes there.
The courts don't turn money fast.
Well, the last time that he was here, we were talking to him about it, he said that he was just leaving here and either had the next day, had court for ordinance violations, and he said, and they'll get paid.
Are you sure that they would charge it down, because attorneys usually add interest, if it's not paid, they get interest, every day it's not paid, so I'd ask Joe that.
It'll be on the garnishment, whatever, it'll be on their garnishment.
I think what you're talking about Bruce is more like a tax collection.
Where, I think they're acting more as litigators on our behalf as opposed to a collection agency.
You're, yeah, you're talking like a tax, like a lien that's on, um, that shows up on title or something that there is interest of collecting on that. Possibility and then so much per day late. Plus the penalty and then so much per day late.
I'll email him tomorrow and ask him what the fee is for ordinance court to take.
And if his fee goes in with the small claims fee? I think it does.
Yeah, it should. All of the, you're gonna have to put attorney fees in all that.
Anything else?
Okay. Do I have a motion that we adjourn meeting tonight?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
We're done.